All right, I guess we're ready. It is six o'clock and we will call the meeting of the City Council to order on June 28th, right? At six o'clock PM. I have the invocation and the pledge, so if you stand and join me, please. Lord, we thank you. We thank you for rain. Beautiful, beautiful rain. We'll take all that you want to send us. We thank you for a river. We thank you for enough water that comes from that river. We thank you for the wells that supply that water, that sustain us. We thank you for a vibrant and a growing city, full of potential and possibilities. But we also thank you for the challenges that come from that potential and possibilities. And we just ask that you be with us as we face up to those challenges. I ask that you continue to be with the people of Uvalde as they try to move on with life. And I ask that you be with us as we make decisions. Help us to be the people that you would want us to be. Help us to put others first. Help us to treat others with kindness and respect. And we just thank you, Lord, for the ability to live where we live and to do what we do. In your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for All right, there he is. Stuart, come in and tell us what you have for us.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And I'm going to reiterate your thankful prayer for rain. It's so nice to hear that noise the last couple of days, something we haven't been used to in a while. All right, we have a few events coming up that we're looking forward to. Tomorrow, we're going to have some puppet fun at the library. Wednesday, June 29th, Nancy and Friends Puppet Show at the Calhoun Theater. That's from 10 to 11 AM. I encourage you to come join us. We've had some great programs. It's part of their summer program going on. And we had 767 people last week at the Raptor Show, so good turnout, looking forward to it. Pool promotional days at the Olympic Pool, Friday night, which is July 1st, it's Family Swim Night. We're also having a pool, I mean, a movie starts at 8:30, and I think it's Finding Nemo. So I may go out there for that, I love that movie. Next Monday, Independence Day, ice cream, free ice cream from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. And then if you missed this July 1st Family Swim Night, there's another one coming up on July 23rd, so keep that in mind. And finally, the big event on Monday, Fourth on the River, our annual Fourth on the River celebration, Louise Hayes Park, begins at 2:00 PM. And obviously, quite a lineup, finishing up with Robert Earl King, and then the fireworks show at 9:30. And I just want to say a couple of things about the fireworks show. And there's a press release that we'll be putting out tomorrow. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I just want to reiterate a couple of important points. Please remember that it is illegal for any person to sell, use, shoot, discharge, explode, ignite, possess, or display any fireworks within the city limits. Very important to keep that in mind. So we're encouraging people this year to forego those and come down to Louise Hayes Park on Monday for a professionally monitored fireworks show. Kerrville Parks and Recreation Department and the Kerrville Fire Department are working together to monitor the drought conditions for the fireworks display and are planning accordingly to safeguard our citizens, businesses, and visitors. The maximum fireworks shell size has been reduced this year from five inches to four inches to ensure the fallout zone is within a reasonable and safe area. The required fallout zone is 360 feet from the display and is never allowed to be over any homes or structures. And that fallout zone was mowed last week, and it will be mowed again prior to the event if necessary. At the Fourth of July event, the Kerrville Fire Department will have additional firefighters on hand and one staffed brush truck. And the Center Point Volunteer Fire Department is providing a second staffed brush truck during the display. The fire marshal will give final authorization for unfireworks display on the day of the event. Wind speeds can impact any decision on the fireworks display, and those will be included in the marshal's inspection on that day. So we're taking quite a bit of precautions on others' concerns about that. But we encourage everybody to come down. We think it's going to be another great year and looking forward to it.
And it may be Robert Earl's last Fourth on the River.
It is.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Chief, anything you want to add about fireworks and safety?
So real quickly, as within the years past, so we monitor closely with the Parks Department, always watching the area where the display is going off. This year, especially careful, obviously, with the extreme drought conditions, monitoring that. We've watched the Texas Forestry Service, they have predictive models out there. Obviously, the rain was a blessing to receive. And then we always take other safeguards. So we run the emergency management down for the Fourth of July event, so I'll be down there. Chief McCall, we have two other operations chiefs. We have a brush truck with two trained firefighters on it. We'll have additional personnel watching that can hook up the hydrant and catch any areas there. We have Center Point out on the island watching for that. These do not go over, although they are very large, you can watch from HEB or anywhere else in the city, nothing goes over our structures there. So we make sure that, so we make sure we're all in sync, so very situational aware of what's going on during the event, making sure we keep it safe for the citizens down there as much as possible.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
We're going to watch it closely. The fire marshal will be down there on the day of, and we'll be working closely on that event to make sure it's a safe event. And once again, to kind of reiterate what Stuart mentioned, everyone kind of come down to the park would be much better to watch it than setting off your, even if you have a place to go in the county. That is, this is not the time to do that unprofessional. That is what they do. So, thank you.
We'll be in good shape as long as everybody heats that. So thank you, thank you. Council, any announcements or anything that you would like to share? Anybody? All right, I'm going to take a minute here and do that. Peterson Health, we need to give a shout out to them. They received a nationwide Best Place to Work Award. So I think that's super, and congratulations to them. KEDC has also received an award. They have been recognized as a number one city by the Governor's Office for cities with a population of 15,000 to 40,000 for workforce and economic development initiatives. And this was over the past couple of years. And so congratulations to them and keep up the good work. I think there'll be a public announcement coming out any day now for that. Again, for the fireworks and our safety, we thank all of you. Parks and Rec, the Fire Department, we just appreciate what you guys are doing for us. And I think kudos to Minimart for paying for the fireworks this year. So that's wonderful. With our water supply, EA, do we have anybody that would want to say a couple of words to? I know there's been a lot of concern about not actually being in water restrictions yet. Do you want to say just a couple of words why we're where we are and in such good shape?
Well, we are still in year-round conservation, and we've really seen citizens heat that. And so fortunately, the demand for water over the course of this drought going into 2022 and throughout the duration has really, folks have been responsible. And so they're not watering as much as they typically are in other summers, and you'll see that certainly in our finance report. But that's a good thing because that's helping us maintain our safe operating capacities. And so as we are pulling back from use within the river, because the flows are so low and moving more towards wells, it's helping us continue to maintain a good balance there. We just appreciate our citizens conserving.
Yes, and they are, and that's wonderful. Thank you. Would also like to mention, we are looking for applicants for some boards. Main Street Advisory Board, the Senior Services Advisory Board, the TERS, the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board, the Zoning Board of Adjustments, and these are due by August 12th. So if you or somebody that you know of is interested in applying for those, we would love to have them submit those. And I believe we also have somebody from the Doyle community to introduce a new executive director.
Yes, yes. Well, first of all, I'd have to say a big thank you to the city because, BK, come on up here. Back in 2019, Judy, Mayor, I believe you were on the team that went to Chicago that pitched for a grant, the Build Challenge Health Grant, which we received. And with that, we gained five or six partners and more. So with that money, we were able to renovate the building. So now, what do you do with a building that's ready for work? You need staff, which we have a great staff, we have a great team of volunteers. But now we have someone who can lead us into the future with this new building and help our staff, direct our staff, direct our volunteers. And I couldn't be more proud and happy to introduce BK Gamble to you as our new executive director at Doyle Community Center.
And he wouldn't stay retired. And he wouldn't stay retired.
Yeah, he works for us, BK.
It was certainly a short retirement. I just kept finding things to do, and then this happened. It was a wonderful opportunity, and I think the timing was right for me to accept the challenge. So I've been on the job since June 1st, and there's lots of stuff to do, as you can imagine, right? And so I'm trying to get my arms around it, and I'm excited to work with the team that we have. And we have a couple of job openings, so trying to get those folks in so we can get staffed up. So you'll hear more from us because there's always more programs we want to do. We just finished Blues Fest, and that was awesome, if you were there. Or if you weren't there, you probably heard about it by now. So we just got other things coming up, and we'll share the news. Okay? Thank you.
Glad to have you, and good luck. Thank you. All right, the next that we have is a proclamation of June as Fair Housing Month. So I am going to read this from the city of Kerrville. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Kerrville, and whereas parks and recreation is vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality... This is Parks and Rec. I believe I have the wrong proclamation. This is Fair Housing Month we're supposed to have.
Mayor, we can come back to that.
Yeah, I think you did that one last time. I remember it.
Yeah, we can come back to it, Mayor.
Yes, I was going to say, let's come back. And I had a copy, but I don't have it with me. So we will do that. I think we did this last week, so last time. All right, we'll do that. Okay, and Shelley has gone, so I will read in the Visitors and Citizens Forum. Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the City Council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the Speaker Request Form and give it to the City Secretary. The Speaker Request Form must be submitted to the City Secretary before the item is called or read into record. City Council may not discuss or take any action on an item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. Each speaker is limited to four minutes. All right, now that you're back, Shelley, let's go ahead, and we'll do this, and then we'll do the proclamation. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, council members, Jeff Harris, 769 Oakland Hills Lane here in Kerrville. And Byron Warren is with me from Oak Hollow out in Comanche Trace, close enough, Dry Hollow.
Dry Hollow.
We just wanted to come here this evening and let you all know about something that is long overdue that we're putting back together. It will be on Saturday, November the 12th, from 9:00 till 11:00 AM, a Veterans Day Parade. So with y'all's support and blessing, and the county's support and blessing, we're looking forward to making this a fun day, winding up in Lewis Hayes Park and have some food trucks and barbecue and some live music. High school bands are already involved. They said they want to march in the parade and perform in the park for us. So much more to come. We just wanted to get it on y'all's radar and the date to y'all this evening.
And what's that date again, Jeff?
It'll be Saturday, November the 12th, the day after Veterans Day. So the biggest thing is, we want kids to be involved in it because we think the young citizens... I know when I was six, seven years old, I remember going to Veterans Day parades in Victoria and getting to know what the meaning of a veteran was. And that's why we want to do this and have as many young folks as we can and veterans and everybody else out there to see it, be part of it, and, you know, have a good time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you, council members, for your service to the community. I want to speak about the water situation. In recent weeks, especially with the announcement of the largest development in Kerrville's history, I've been hearing more concerns from my fellow citizens about the state of rim situation we're in concerning water. The calls have been getting louder, and I was concerned enough that I decided to research the situation myself. I know that's a red flag for some people. Do we have enough water for the city of Kerrville, or has our desire for growth and repetitious exploitation of our precious aquifers set us up for unceremoniously booted into the dust bowls of history? In other words, is the situation dire? I'm bringing, I'm still bringing myself up to speed on this topic, but I have some preliminary findings. My expertise, I have two degrees in geophysics, and I spent 25 years in the oil and gas industry working as a geoscientist. First, the bad news. Kerrville experienced a major drought in the 1950s when the Guadalupe River stopped flowing for various periods of time. So it can happen again. This drought could last for a while. Kerrville uses approximately 5,000 acre-feet of water per year from several sources, including the Guadalupe River, the Trinity Aquifers, Aquifer Storage and Recovery, and recently an Ellenberger well. So what are the resources? Dr. Wilson's 2008 Hydrogeology of Kerr County Report mentions that the average rainfall in Kerr County is approximately 32.6 inches per year. That leads from the average precipitation in Kerr County of nearly 2 million acre-feet per year. Given some of the parameters in Dr. Wilson's hydrogeology report and a conservative measure of the porosity in an unconsolidated sand, I calculated that Hensel Sandstone in Kerr County contains 30 to 40 million acre-feet of water in place. It could be even more. The P-50, the best estimate measure for the Ellenberger Aquifer, contains over 700,000 acre-feet of water in Kerr County. In the Kerrville Long Range Water Supply Document Figure 7, showing the annual stream flow records for Guadalupe River at Comfort from 1940 to 2018, the vertical scale of recorded stream flow is capped at 100,000 acre-feet per year. Fifty of the 78 years experienced stream flows of more than that, which is at least 20 times more than the amount that Kerrville uses. Clearly, there is an abundance of water in Kerr County, although it might not be available at all times and at all locations. And therein lies the engineering challenge. It becomes an engineering problem to deliver this water to Kerrville's residents in a cost-effective and timely manner in times of plenty and scarcity. Kerrville's Aquifer Storage and Recovery Program has been ongoing for more than two decades. Kerrville is storing clean river water in the Lower Trinity Aquifers and has put about 3,000 acre-feet of water into storage. In addition, the city and the Water Department have invested in a long-range plan for meeting Kerrville's needs, and they're following through on that plan. Kerrville has the right to withdraw about 3,600 acre-feet of water from the Trinity Aquifers. Combined with the Aquifer Storage and Recovery water, Kerrville could potentially use these resources for two years without using a drop of water from the Guadalupe River. The new Ellenberger well extends that cushion to more than seven years. Planning, foresight, competence, and good management of our water resources is not an accident. Kerrville is not facing water restrictions because of the excellent management of our water resources by the city and our Water Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ask the Andersons speakers.
Thank you. All right, we will now go back to the proclamation. Whereas Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended, prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States, and whereas the principle of fair housing is not only a national law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans, and whereas the National Fair Housing Law during the month of June provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success in the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now, therefore, I, Judy Eitner, Mayor of the city of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim June 2022 as Fair Housing Month in Kerrville, Texas, and urge all the citizens of this locality to become aware of and support the fair housing law. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Kerrville to be affixed this 28th day of June 2022. Now, this will come back to us in something that Megan will be bringing to us in a little while. This is also something that every Realtor, I hope every Realtor, takes seriously. It is part of what we say, it's part of what we do, it's part of how we have to operate. And it's vitally, vitally important, and I can't say much more about it than that. So, all right, at this time, Ben, we will move on to the consent agenda. And council, we have several items on there. Is there anything that anyone needs to have?
4B.
4B, all right. Anyone else? Anyone from the public?
No.
All right. And do I have a motion for A, C, and D?
I'll make that motion to approve consent agenda items for A, for C, and for D.
Do we have a second? Second. From Brenda? All in favor, raise your right hand. And it passes. Roman, go ahead with 4B.
For 4B, on, this is the minutes of our City Council workshop held on June 14th. Looking at page two of the minutes, we have under Executive Session, the last paragraph saying the closed executive session adjourned, council will return to open session at 5:50 PM, and then the second sentence, Item 3B, the public safety facility was not discussed during executive session. There were a couple of questions that were asked, and some staff provided some information on that. There's nothing wrong with us discussing it because it was on the agenda for executive session, but just to clear the record, I move to approve those minutes and strike that sentence since there was discussion, just for clarity.
Mike, you have to leave advice.
It's a factual statement. I can't, I can't remember. It would take this some time to go back over my notes.
I recall talking about moving a sewer line.
Oh, moving the sewer line.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Okay. Thank you, Brenda. And all in favor, raise your right hand. And it passes. So we will strike the last sentence of that paragraph.
Just the second one. There are three sentences, just want to clarify, it's just the second sign.
Just the second, okay. All right. That will take care of the consent agenda, and we will move on to 5A. Shelley, if you will read that in for us.
Resolution number 37-2022. A resolution authorizing the submission of an application for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMGP DR-4485, to the Texas Division of Emergency Management, authorizing the mayor and the city manager to act as the city's executive officers and authorize representatives in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in this program, and authorizing a local funding match. The grant will be used for installation of emergency power generators at various city facilities, and we do not have any citizen speakers signed up.
All right.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. I know you're expecting Megan, but...
It's good to see you.
She got a little bit taller. No, I figured I would help her out with this because this is something that we have had a joint effort on. No, I figured I would help her out with this because this is something that we have had a joint effort on. Do want to give you a quick update before we discuss that specific resolution. If you recall, October of last year, we submitted a very similar, or we came to you for a resolution, very similar aspect of this. We have actually, as of January, received, or sorry, January, we actually had the application submitted for the twenty-six that you see outlined here. And in May, we received notification, late May, that's why it's on the resolution as it is, for the twenty-six that you see, so it's eight system sewer generators, some of those are portable, central fire station, city hall, and then the sixteen water system generators. Everything we applied for that fit the winter storm requirements within that grant application was not only funded, but they also reduced the local match from twenty-five percent down to ten. That was FEMA's orders to to come to that, so we received notification from T E D M and our grant administrators trailer and associates. And so we're wrapping up the the final aspects of that with FEMA, but wanted to give you a quick update on that. That match, just so you know, is a little less than five hundred thousand, which was originally going to be, if awarded, all of those a couple million, so that that was a significant win for for us to get critical facilities. So with that said, we're going to move into this next one, which is the COVID, you know, the COVID nineteen restrictions. And the resolution sets various facilities, really that has now been reduced to two. The library as a warming center and City University as our E O C center. So that application originally would have consisted of the twenty-six plus these two. With that award, now we're just going after these two. That local match is going to, again, FEMA has set ten percent. So we're going to be down to twenty-five thousand as a local match, if awarded for these two. And that will get everything operational should COVID happen or any or winter storm, any significant emergency situation, we have that ability at these facilities. So tonight, this resolution in front of you is specific for library and city U, essentially to move forward with the application due Thursday. We'll get that, that, the resolution adopted, we'll get the application in about three months of back and forth with T E D M helping us fine tune the applications like they did the last time. And then we hope to have some some good news towards the end of twenty twenty-two for for library and city. That's all I have for you.
All right, questions, counsel? Comments?
Can you state the local match again, that number?
Oh, which one? The first or the second?
The second one with the ten percent.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
Yes, and that's like I said, that's been reduced from twenty-five to ten percent.
I'll make a motion.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, that we approve resolution number thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-two as presented.
Second.
And we have a second, all in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. All right, thank you very much. Five B, Shelley?
Resolution regarding the Texas Downtown Main Street Community Development Block Grant, TXCDBG program application. Number one, resolution number thirty-five dash twenty twenty-two. A resolution designating authorized signatories for contractual documents and documents for requesting funds pertaining to the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program, TXCDBG, grant agreement number C D M twenty-one dash zero one twenty-six. Number two, resolution number thirty-six dash twenty twenty-two. A resolution adopting policies and procedures as required by the Texas Community Development Block Grant, previously awarded to the city, and affirming the city's commitment to conduct a project-specific analysis and to take all appropriate action necessary to comply with the program requirements. And there is one citizen speaker signed up.
All right, thank you for, you got an eight for moving through all of that. All right, Megan.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. So right now with this Community Development Block Grant Program, we are in the post-award state stage of this. So what we are coming to you all tonight for is just some grant requirements that we need you to approve so that we can move forward with funding. So just as a brief timeline, this just outlines the whole process of this grant. We took it to Main Street Advisory Board at the end of twenty twenty. We've selected the firms to help us with the grant services to apply. And in November last year, we were notified of that we were recommended for funding. So today, we are coming to ask that you approve the signatories for the contractual documents that we have, and then there are some required policies and procedures that we have to adopt as well. And I went ahead and added this in here. Five C is just the professional services agreement with Kimley Horn, who helped us with the pre-award design engineering services. So we're just, I kind of loop this in here so that you all know it's pertaining to this. So just to go back over the project areas, so we have two main project areas. So the first one is at the Earl Garrett and Water Street intersection. They will be doing intersection improvements, which is ADA ramps, signalization, and just making sure that the signal at Sydney Baker and Water, and then this one are synced, so it's going to help improve traffic a little bit. Then the next main one is installing pedestrian crosswalk right there at Water and Clay. So especially considering the farmers markets there, there's definitely a need right there with the parking garage to make sure that's a safer area for pedestrians. And then, so those are the two main parts of the project, and we did have some funding left over to address some of the tree wells where the bricks are kind of uprooted and fix some of the pedestrian sidewalks so that the ramps have better access for ADA accessibility. So I just wanted to go back over those areas for you. So right now, we're currently in the post-award document stage, like I mentioned. So we have a few resolutions that we need adopted. We're hoping by the end fall of this year, they're going to be doing an environmental review, and that Kimley Horn will finalize the engineering so that in winter we can award the contract for construction. And then all of twenty twenty-three is the time we have allotted for that construction. So tonight, we have two different resolutions. The first one is just designating the signatories for the documents requesting the funding from the CDBG grant. The second one is adopting policies and procedures that are required as a part of the Community Development Block Program, and those are included in your packet as well. Did y'all have any questions?
Can you go back to this picture of the second intersection?
Sure.
Clay and water, I think.
There won't actually be a stoplight there.
So not a stoplight, no, though, so the first design that came back was going to be like a flashing stop sign.
That's indicating that at that, that intersection we have down there, that's what, Sydney Baker and Clay? Or Water, is that what that's indicating? That up there, there's going to be that?
No, so this one's right by the parking garage, so there's going to be a three-way pedestrian crosswalk so that people can walk across and actually have a stop sign there. Because right now, there's nothing, only at the farmer's market where they put those temporary stop signs up. This is going to replace that and have it all the time. Conceptually.
Yes, we've done this temporarily, really over the last two to three years as we've had hosted the farmer's market at the A C Shriner House. And we've seen really good success with it during those more peak times. We do anticipate higher levels of pedestrian traffic as we renovate that facility and are seeing more traffic going through there, also going to the library as well as we've really seen quite a few of the businesses along Water Street now begin to fill up and and be utilized from a pedestrian standpoint as well. And so we need to enhance pedestrian safety in that in that three-way intersection, as well as motor safety.
Right, so when you say, would they, we're going to install stop-ahead signs, where's the stop, because there's two stop-ahead?
So the stop-ahead signs, if you see, it's kind of hard to see, but there's a little red dot at the beginning of where the the black starts, so that's just saying stop ahead for that pedestrian crosswalk.
I think there's just a mistake.
Saying stop, there's a stop sign.
Another one right here by the crosswalk?
There's a mistake on the diagram, that's all.
I think so, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
What mistake are you seeing?
So there's this also stop-ahead sign right next to the crosswalk, if you go a little bit down.
We think this, we think.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That should be the stop sign, correct?
That's the second one, right above install.
That makes more sense.
So that's a permanent stop?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was confused, and that's why my question about if it was a stop-ahead sign for the light intersection.
I think it's meant to be like on the right side where it says install stop sign. I think they want.
Just a typo on the label.
Okay.
It looks good.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, counsel?
Did I understand that these crosswalks may have a decorative feature?
We could, again, this is just conceptual design by law, the, or really by the Uniform Traffic Standards, really just have to have a certain width of white line that crosses across there. There isn't anything that really has to go in the middle of those. You can see kind of a blank, a more blank crosswalk that's currently located at Jefferson and Clay. And that is basically the minimum standard of a of a crosswalk. And so sometimes you'll see these, not quite crosshatched, but these kind of broader, broad white lines that are utilized. But you can also utilize different techniques within that spacing between the the wide white lines.
Was that some of the discussion with like the Kerrville, I mean, the Kerrville Urban Trail System?
Yes, we have, we've had some discussions about different, more decorative techniques within those crosswalks. We're current, we're still in those discussions. If that progresses, we'll certainly bring those forward to counsel.
Okay, anyone else? All right, and we have a speaker, you said, Shelley?
Yes, ma'am. Peggy McKay, one oh three Westchester. Megan identified the project, and that was helpful. But my question is, we take these grants and all the exhibits that go with them, the verbiage in there is, could be interpreted differently depending on the requirements. It will say something that is not a definitive requirement that we have to do in reporting, and it leaves it open to interpretation. Have we ever had a problem with complying with this type verbiage before?
What, what are you looking at, and there's, and there's two resolutions? On resolution, on the second resolution?
Um, it's got, it just seems to be filled with requirements of the city. And I'm assuming that this is the one where we have a match of fifty-two thousand five hundred on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. And it it just seems to be an awful lot of reporting and requirement and record keeping on the city's part.
I think Peggy, that.
Is that common?
These, it, these are just all requirements, it, it's, it's things that just have to be a part of those resolutions. And as far as I'm, I'm, I, I really can't speak to what has happened in the past, but they, it's, it has to be, we have to agree to those things as you understand in order to get the grant. Some of them sound kind of far out and as you read them, but it's all just part of what we need to do.
But we've never had a problem with crossing the Ts and dotting the Is in the past.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and speak on this. So ma'am, this is not just for grants, anything that we get that is any state or federal assistance, like our Water Development Board grant or loans that we take out, it's really just the the red tape that we have to follow. And no, we have not had any problems with that.
Okay, that was.
It does take a little more involvement on on our end, but that's actually why we're here. This is part of that that state requirement to to get that funding mechanism. And we just, you know, we have folks like Grant Works to to help us through this this process.
Okay, so the the requirements of the city and the reporting, the record keeping, does that add up to a significant amount of money, or is is it all built in?
That's all built in to staff time. And so that's just what we do, be it the Engineering Department, Megan with the Main Street Department, that's for any project, that's just part of our our protocol, whether it's a city project or a federally funded project. We're, we're in it, in it to to get it completed.
Okay, that answered my question, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, if there are no further comments or questions, do we have a motion?
I move that we, it's complicated.
We're doing this two? I think you can do, we can do them together, right? We should be able to.
I approve resolution number thirty-five dash twenty twenty-two and resolution number thirty-six twenty twenty-two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand, and we are all in agreement.
Martin.
We okay?
We're good.
Okay, the wizard revealed himself. All right, and that is approved unanimously, maybe in more ways than one. All right, Shelley, if you'll read us in for five C.
Professional Services Agreement with Kimley Horn Associates, Inc. for Texas Downtown Main Street Community Development Block Grant Program, post-award services in the amount of seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and ten dollars, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, Megan. This is one of our favorite people tonight.
So like I mentioned in the previous presentation, so this is just a professional services agreement with them. They did all of those renderings, and they helped us with all of the design for the pre-award application. So now this is just hiring them on to help us finish out this process.
All right, questions, comments, counsel? Anyone? All right, do we have a motion?
I'll move that we authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the professional services agreement with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc.
Second.
We have a second, everyone in favor, raise your right hand, please. And it is unanimous, thank you, Megan. All right, five D.
Authorize cities purchase of an approximate seven point one one seven acre tract of land, generally located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Clearwater Passo Drive and Rio Monte Drive, by authorizing the city manager to accept the conveyance of a deed for such property and to take any other action necessary to effectuate the transaction. Said property to be developed and used as a city's public safety facility, and there is one citizen speaker signed up.
All right, thank you. Michael?
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's so nice to see y'all. I'm sorry I missed the last meeting. I don't know if I can say it any better than Shelley did, I don't have any art for this. As you all know, this is a piece of property that had been previously placed under contract, and that was contingent upon the passage of the the ballot. So subsequent to that, and our due diligence and a considerable amount of staff time just kind of worked through all the particulars, we're now here at this point, ready to close on the property. And so the purchase price on that is seven hundred and five thousand dollars for that seven point one one seven acres. And the general fund at this point will cover the cost of that, and then the proceeds from the bond will reimburse that back to the general fund. And you should, you have a copy of the survey there behind you. That's all I got, you have any questions up here?
Will you just reiterate to the public how we do our due diligence in determining determining a fair sales price?
Absolutely, so, you know, a lot of times, and I used to be a Realtor a long, long time ago. So what, you know, what you see in the appraisal districts, right? The appraisal districts tell us the valuation of the property and the assessment that you're going to get is based on that valuation. That typically is never in line with the market valuations. So as an example, you know, the taxing entity K C A values your house at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so you're assessed school district taxes, county taxes, based on that hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, any of us out here today know that if we try to give somebody a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a house in Kerrville, we're probably not going to, they're probably not going to sell it to us because the market value of that property is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So there's always a discrepancy in that. And so when we looked at properties to purchase, we consulted with real estate professionals and looked all over, and the commercial rates that were available to us for the sizes that we were looking for, that was the market rate that was available. So the property actually appraises at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right, from a market standpoint. From the appraisal district standpoint, who is just the taxing entity who determines how much that valuation is, those two things are wholly separate. One's kind of a private entity, right, that market appraisal of your property, which then translates back to the appraisal district at a later time. But it's always that the appraisal district is is kind of lagging behind the market, if that makes sense.
Confirm that we had an independent appraisal of the property.
Yes, we had an independent appraisal of the property.
Thank you, and we have a report from that appraiser to that effect.
That's correct.
Is that report available to the public?
I'll let City Attorney Hay speak to that. That would be helpful.
And we did have a, we had an email from an individual basically asking these these questions.
Yes.
And so we have sent an email to him with those answers, but hopefully this will also help him understand the difference between the tax appraisals value and market value, so big difference.
Yes.
All right.
We sent the email to him, but.
Pardon?
I'm not sure we actually sent that email to him.
Okay, we will, if we did not, we'll make sure that it does get to him, yes.
Well, I, I don't.
Are you okay with it?
I, I.
Joe, or do you?
Do not know that we want to send everything in this email into public, but it's, it's been mentioned in public, so I guess it's public record.
Okay, any, any prob, any advice there, Mike?
Well, I think, you know, staff will reach out to the to the emailer and make sure that he understands.
That he understands, yes.
I'm happy to do that.
All right, any other questions or comments, counsel?
A follow-up on that, so we did get staff's response to that was, our response has, is pending to get to the citizen, or it has already been sent to the citizen, and we were just copied onto it.
Staff was never sent any email requests from any constituent.
But the, but.
But we're happy, we're happy to do that, but we responded to counsel. Counsel, I believe, had received the email, so we made sure the counsel was informed of the answers.
Okay, so, so it's up, up to us to make sure that it goes further, if we wish.
Know that there's any privileged or confidential information in it, is there?
I don't think so there, I don't think so either. Okay, we will make sure that he has a response, okay? All right then, we don't have any speakers, right?
We do have.
We do have.
Madam Mayor, counsel, thank you for letting me come here tonight. I love the fact that we're in the middle or in the beginning of this process, but I think like the constituent that you were talking about just now, I too have a couple of questions, and I'd like, if if you could get some clarification. On page forty-seven of the agenda, it talks about this proposal for allowing the payments to go through. And now I know who Michael Holmes is, I don't know what his position was, but I read this through before I got here, and I was like, it's submitted by somebody named Michael Holmes, and the money is being paid to a limited partnership. All I know is that in February, that this property was listed with Brinkman Commercial, and now it's totally different people is what I'm saying. So if there's any way you can clarify who's, who is it being sold to? And is, are any of those people, do they have any current contacts or relationship with the city of Kerrville?
Uh, I can speak to to who owns it, right? So we, so we do that based off of, we go straight to Kerrville, Kerr County Appraisal District, and that shows the current ownership of that property, right? And so the current ownership of that property is, as you see there, payment made to is Hervey Square Limited Partnership. Couldn't tell you exactly why someone has a name that is that versus.
A person.
Anything else, right? So it's not, it's not kind of up to us, but but we work through the broker, and they represent the folks who are that Hervey Square Partnership, so that's a roundabout.
Well, that kind of leads, yeah, it kind of leads into my second. Just for transparency sake, because this is going to be a process for the whole public safety facility. We spoke, gosh, last fall about conflicts of interest and affidavits. And I was just wondering, because it could be a matter of me filing a public information request, but I'm kind of wondering right now if there is any city employees, city staff, elected officials, or any appointees to a city committee or board. elected officials, or any appointees to a city committee or board that has filed voluntarily or required to file an affidavit, uh, because of a conflict of interest due to this sale.
Not that I know of, no ma'am, I don't think so.
Okay, Shelley would know, right, because they have to file with her?
Yeah, and so, did anybody file?
No, no, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are we ready for a motion, counsel? Don't all speak at once.
I authorize the city manager to finalize and execute a contract.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Step one, we are on our way. Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Five E, Shelley, if you'll read us in?
Resolution Number thirty-eight dash twenty-two. A resolution authorizing the city to utilize a design build method of the construction of the city's public safety facility and authorizing other related actions as part of the method. There is one citizen speaker signed up.
All right. Stuart?
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. Well, congratulations on your purchase of your piece of property. So I'm here to spruce it up, make it even more of what you want. And that's what this resolution is, is going to do for us. Uh, as we talked about in our, uh, June fourteenth workshop, we have to, um, come to council to approve a design build contract or a resolution, so the staff can go ahead and, and award that. And we went through all the particulars, um, on that, for design build versus the standard low bid process. Uh, and so I'm bringing here, here tonight to bursing, to bring the resolution, um, for, to approve the design build process for us. We're not selecting a, a, a firm to work with, we're just saying, staff, you can use this method as project delivery for, for this project.
And what, what will, what will your first step be, Stuart?
So after we get, well, the first step, I guess, will be the next one after this. And we'll be relocating the sewer line. And then if, but the first part of the design build process, what we'll do is we'll go out and we'll, uh, we'll actually have our clients or our owner's rep that we would hire to help us. Per the state law says if you're not commonly doing these design build processes, you actually have to have an owner's rep. And then through that, after that process, we hire, and we go through the RFQ process, which will request for qualifications. Those qualifications will go out and, um, select an architect and a designer, uh, or excuse me, a contractor. We will review that process, review those people, and then after we get down to a short list, um, we will go out for an RFP, which are request for proposal. Uh, those proposals will identify the, the scope or their, their amount of general, uh, general, special state term you're supposed to use, but it's the general terms or, uh, conditions on their contract of how much they are going to actually charge us for that. And they're, they get to identify their overhead and profit as well. So we'll take all that information, that's the way we're going to compare the builders from one design build team to the other. And then we will work with them to actually come up with a design, have it not to exceed contractual amount to build the building. It's kind of a long process and I can go through and give a little more detail on that, but just real high level, that's, that's the process as to how it works.
How long do you expect that process to take? Six months?
I always underestimate these things. It'll probably take a little bit, because it's going to take, this process, that, it's kind of front-end loaded. And so we come to y'all tonight for this, uh, design build resolution. Next, we'll be here next week with, um, potentially a, a owner's representative, uh, excuse me, not next week, but the next council meeting. We'll have an owner's representative. After that, we're going to, to notify everybody, um, to come back, uh, the architects. And we'll probably give them a month or so to give us their qualification. And then there's another month or month and a half for the relative. So we're looking at probably a four or five month process really before we even start the design work.
Okay.
And hopefully we'll be able to get it done faster than that. We're going to push it as fast as, but realistically, the way the market is right now,
Yeah.
um, it's going to be at least, it's going to be at least three months before we're, before we're up and running or starting the design process.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Help me understand a couple of things. So we, this resolution, are we, or are we not contracting or entering into an agreement with a, an entity to be the city's rep?
No, sir. This is just approval for staff, um, so the state
So, because now that's where I'm confused.
It's, it's, it's giving the city manager authority to enter into a contract with Freezing Nichols, is there? This is a similar process we used for, um, development of the HHHC.
Right.
And it's all, you know, you, you've got to do this. You, you have to have an owner's rep pursuant to this chapter of state law.
Right.
And then that owner's rep, Freezing Nichols has the experience to help us with the, um, the documents to go out for an RFP and things of that.
Touch it.
That, that is, that is correct, but the, 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 the process tonight, and I may have missed that in the resolution, um, where Freezing Nichols, Freezing Nichols did it on the HHHC. And we've, we've used this contract with them during that, that event as well. And so some of this may be, um, leftover from, let me get
It's in section three, page two of the resolution. I hear a couple of people asking where that is at.
Yeah, so that scope development process is still underway. Uh, and so we would anticipate, because that is over the fifty thousand dollar threshold, uh, we would likely bring that to you guys, uh, in a secondary, uh, action, just to have you all authorize that.
So it's
Can adopt this, um, resolution and you, if you'll just, if that's the pleasure of counsel, uh, the motion will be to adopt the resolution, striking section three.
Yes, sir. So then at the next time when we enter into the agreement, that includes the amount we're paying them, that will be, that's separate. Because the resolution is really just the process of, we, we're required by state law to pass the resolution saying we're using the design build method, right? And we'll have a second resolution for that part. I'm good with that.
And you'll have a scope and a fee, uh, as well, to, to come be that. So you'll be able to see all the work they're going to do, how much it's going to cost us, and then you can award that or not at that time.
Good catch, good catch.
Good catch.
All right.
All right, any, are you comfortable?
I'm comfortable, I'll make a motion if there's
Everyone else?
No more discussion.
Okay, would you have a speaker? Shelley, I believe?
Peggy McKay.
Peggy McKay, one oh three Westchester. I'm still confused about the design partnership. Um, uh, when you use the term we, I wasn't sure if that was the city, um, staff? Or is this, um, the person who is going to oversee the contractor? I, I, I just, I'm not familiar with this process.
Do you have that PowerPoint presentation from our workshop last week?
I don't have it, they
I mean, not with you now, but I mean, is that something that maybe we could email?
Sure, yeah, we could send it to her.
Because we went through a whole, we went through three different options for how to, to build, how we can go into this process. And then, um, there were really good explanations of the design build process. And it has, it lays out all of the, the, um, advantages and talks about some of, you know, perhaps disadvantages to each of the processes.
Okay, so tonight you're doing the resolution to do the, this particular process.
Right.
It's a process.
And when you talk about the owner, who is the
Owner's rep, the owner's rep?
Owner's rep.
So the city will be the owner, the city of Kerrville owns the project. We, the owner's representative, who, who we're not awarding tonight, with, uh, uh, we found on section three, we're going to omit that. It's going, we, we don't have them approved yet, we got to bring that back. We'll have a scope and fee for, for council to consider. And so we have not selected them yet. We're talking to Freezing Nichols about it a, as, as we speak right now. Um, but we have not been approved by council for that.
They, I mean, and they basically are there to represent us, make sure that we follow all of the state statutes and to kind of be an intermediary, um, is the way I understand it. But I mean legally, I, I, if there's
Is that specific to this design build process? That you have this position?
Yeah, it's required by state law.
Okay, but if you went another direction like apparently we've done in the fa, the past, since I haven't heard the design build, uh, phrase before, then in, it was done in-house with staff? Is that right?
It's not, you're not required to have that, I mean, you're not required to have
What we're looking at is, and what council kind of, as a majority determined during that workshop, I, I think it was before, the workshop before our last regular meeting, we got the three options that Councilwoman Clarkson said.
Oh, watch that.
And we kind of went and said, okay, because staff recommended, because these other entities or this other firm or another firm, it doesn't have to necessarily be Freezing Nichols, has more experience doing these types of facilities than our staff does.
The facility is what's pushing the design build?
Right. It's, it's on a case-by-case basis like we would, like we could go out and do, you know, the bid process. But because of this specific project, as a majority council decided to go ahead and
It's more sophisticated building is what you're saying, which takes, and Freezing Nichols is
That's what we're looking at right now. But in this resolution, they were included in it, we're omitting it, that section from this resolution. Because at a later time, we'll set out the scope of whoever that person's going, or firm's going to be.
Okay, I'll watch that workshop.
Yeah, that'll
But, but it's the terminology that's confusing.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And Peggy, this is also what is being used for the heritage building. This same type of process.
Heritage, meaning
Part of the hills?
Part of the hills.
Right next to the library? We approve the same thing for that develop, construction.
Same type of agreement, yes.
All right. Is anyone comfortable?
Yes.
Are we ready for a motion?
I'll move to adopt or, uh, Resolution Number twenty-eight dash twenty-two and omit section three.
Okay, and I believe it's thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Sorry, yeah. Thirty-eight dash twenty-two.
Okay. And say the whole thing again.
Sure, I'll move to adopt Resolution Number thirty-eight dash twenty-two and omit section three.
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. All right, very good. And we're on to five F. Shelley, if you will read us in?
Professional Service Agreement with Freezing Nichols, Inc. To design the relocation of Grabby Sewer Main at the future public safety facility on Rio Monte Drive in the amount of ninety thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Yes, sir.
All right, so now we actually get to spend some money on the new property that we just bought. So this, there's a sewer line that runs across the property kind of at a diagonal. It's not perfectly on diagonal, but very close, and it has a T that comes into it. And we need to relocate that sewer to the perimeter of the property. And so it's one of our bigger mains, it's actually a twenty-one inch, um, clay main that runs across the property. And so we are going to, um, hire Freezing Nichols to reroute that via some new manholes and some new main up to the edge. So we have some room in the middle of our property to actually build the building. So, uh, under this contract, they will do that work. Um, and then we will bring y'all back. Once that it's completed, we'll actually bring you construction documents and contract for the, for the actual work. This is just the design.
Questions, counsel?
I had a question, um, by a constituent. What method did the city use to determine to use Freezing Nichols for this project?
So we have some, there are different engineering firms that we use for different type of work. Like on streets, we usually use successing, on, on wastewater stuff, we typically use Freezing Nichols. Water, some of the water lines that we've been using, we've, we've come, we've used John, you know, it depends on the type of work. Uh, because they have a good understanding of our system and what, what the city needs, um, to facilitate it. It's, um, if you look at it as a system as a whole, instead of a little bitty piece, we don't want to have to re-educate every engineer that we, that we hire as to how the system is going to work. And so we get a, a, some institutional knowledge, um, from them by using the same engineers for the same process. And we don't have to pay them to kind of ramp up to our, um, system.
Okay.
I think the, the concern that was expressed was the situation that occurred with our wastewater lines when we contracted them. For, it was a different project under the bridge.
Okay.
Others got washed out. And so I've heard many times, you know, there's a part, there's two parts to being up here on council here. One, representing the citizens, the constituents, but we also represent the interests of the city itself as well. So I'm now at the point of doing both, what my constituents are saying and the best interest of the city. And so that's what I've heard. And so with all those concerns out there, that also does concern me a bit.
Yeah, we've done millions of design work with Freezing Nichols, uh, and that specific project, as you recall, uh, that unfortunately we did have, uh, we were fortunate in that they basically provide pro bono services for us to not only make that project right, uh, but get over, uh, a million and a half dollars to be able to put that location, uh, actually up in the bridge, uh, in, in an area and location that we weren't able to afford, this community wasn't able to afford, uh, without, uh, realizing those grant dollars. So, uh, they've been, uh, very good at the city of Kerrville, uh, have a high level of expertise, as, uh, Mr. Barron mentioned. Uh, and they're in the process of completing our water wastewater master plan, uh, and have designed, again, millions of dollars of, of water and wastewater infrastructure for this community. So they, they have a high level of expertise. We have a high level of confidence in their work.
They made a mistake, they not made a mistake, but they corrected an issue for which they had responsibility.
Yes, sir.
That's a good supplier.
Oh, yeah. They're small for sure.
They have been good to us. So, um, time-wise on this, uh, any idea? Once it's approved and you get
We're going to, so we're bringing this to y'all first, so we can kind of get started at it. Because I, the, the other process, the design build process is kind of the front-ended, front-loaded doc, or, or process. Um, so we think that the sewer line can get designed in, wait, two months?
Loaded question.
Our eyes are on you.
Right, uh, right now it's hard to nail them down. They're, they, the engineers and in the construction business, it is super busy and it's really hard to get bids back. And so, um, I would think they would be able to, to design this, um, after their survey work and everything in about two months, two, two to three months. And then we'll get a contractor in here and we'll just see what that, what that looks like at that time.
And I think, my understanding, this is an old sewer line, as old as clay?
Yes, well, clay some. It is a clay sewer, yes.
Yeah.
And it's, it's super, it's super flat. And so it will be, it's not as easy as some people are, are thinking, because as you put more bins in it, you still have to make grade. And it's super straight and flat right now. And so it's not going to be perfectly easy to make that happen. Um, with the additional footage that you put in there, you're, you're, they're still going to have to find fall. And so it's, it's going to take a little bit of effort and some, some creativeness, because that, that land over there is, it's flat.
Yeah. All right, y'all, so any other questions, comments? All right, do we have a motion? You guys are asleep tonight.
Sorry, it's my turn, obviously.
Right there.
Okay, I move that we authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the professional services agreement with Freeze and Nichols on this design project.
I'll second that, thank you. Do, all in favor, please, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous, and we're moving down the road. Wonderful, thank you. Can't make it happen too fast. All right, six A. Amy, it's all yours, not Amy, Julie.
Amy's my sister, actually, so. Okay. I decided, I thought I might wear Drew's name tag, but y'all will be seeing me that much over the next few months, but, um, okay. So, uh, the first slide here, I'm just going to give you a quick update and we won't go over all this, but kind of you have a little bit of knowledge for some of the things you've already seen tonight. Um, we are in the process of, uh, completing our final draft of the preliminary official statement for the bond. So working with, um, bond counsel and then also with Hilltop to get that completed. Uh, we're preparing documents for our S and P call that'll be taking place in July as well. Um, as you know, we'll be completing a land purchase, which we're super excited about that. That gets us one step closer to moving on and then the design of the relocation of the sewer line. So those are the things we're kind of working through now, just as next steps. Uh, we do still, um, anticipate to receive funds on or about the fifteenth of September. So, uh, once we receive those funds, we will be doing some reimbursement, um, as the ordinance said. And we'll talk about that just a little bit. Okay. So a quick overview of our biggest revenues here in the general fund. So current collections on property tax, uh, ten million four hundred thousand. So a hundred and eighty-three thousand of that, or almost a hundred and eighty-four, is from prior years, as we continue to talk about each month. Uh, we're two hundred and forty-three thousand from meeting budget, so, uh, very hopeful that that will, uh, be, be an easy meet. Um, keep in mind, June thirtieth is the last, uh, day for the half payer agreements. So in July, we'll have a really good idea of what property tax is going to look like, but we thoroughly expect to meet budget. Um, sales tax current collections, uh, six point two eight, uh, million. Uh, we did see, um, an increase still thirteen percent over fiscal year twenty-one through May, so still maintaining good strength there. Uh, June sales tax has been received and that was Uh, June sales tax has been received, and that was twelve percent over June of fiscal year twenty-one. And um, as we go through this and through the next few months, and when I say I'm estimating, keep in mind, I change estimates. Daily, weekly, monthly, so I try to give you my best um, estimate of where I think we're gonna end the year, so don't hold me to those as they change every month. Um, right now, I'm thinking that uh, sales tax is gonna end about six hundred thousand better than our amended budget, so sales tax is doing really good.
Julie, remind me, um, if you remember, based on this budget year, and I, and that maybe the amended budget. How did, where did we, where did we allocate the sales tax, how did we determine?
For this budget, so we um, back in about June and early July. We estimated three percent over what we thought we were gonna end the year in fiscal year twenty-one. And fiscal year twenty-one, October, November, which was for August and September, actually came back substantially better than we thought, so. We were flat or even a little bit behind what our year end was for twenty-one, for twenty-two's budget, if that makes sense. We're estimating three percent, but we. At that point in time, right, that's why I say estimations, and I'm always gonna kind of estimate a little bit lower. Um, than what I see on the paper when I do the forecasting, um, just so that I'm conservative with that, so.
So we're saying what you considered three percent last year, we are talking about, or it's been presented to us that potentially six percent year.
Well, what I'm presenting is six percent for FY twenty-three.
Yes.
Is six percent on top of what I'm estimating us to end this year.
Right, okay.
Correct, so that's why those estimations are super important, and that we're very confident in those as we go forward, because we're projecting next year's. Sales tax on the, based on that, so.
Thank you.
So, moving on to your revenues by categories, so um, revenues really remain strong overall. Uh, looking at about a million dollars ahead of fiscal year um. Twenty-two budget, um, and that's primarily due to early collection of property taxes, so I expect some of this to start leveling out. Um, sales tax being so strong, and then EMS revenues um, are performing well above budget, and and there's a reason for that, that I thought I might bring up tonight. So, if you remember back in COVID twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, those areas, we had a drop in EMS, and so those. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two budgets were essentially flat with each other, so what we're seeing is a rebound of those. Um, numbers, and so we probably could have projected or or budgeted a higher EMS revenue for twenty twenty-two. But budgeting those in February, right during the middle of COVID, was really hard, so that was just a conservative um, budget, based on what we had seen over the past few years. So we do expect EMS um, to far exceed the twenty-two budget, and we'll talk about that too as we go into twenty-three. Here's your revenues by category, um, graphically, um, I did go ahead and add some dollars to the three largest categories here, just so you could kind of see how those shake out. Uh, property tax is budgeted at thirty-five percent of overall revenues, uh, right now at forty-three, but again, as sales tax. Grows and property tax slows, we expect to see those start coming together, uh, everything else is lining up uh, really well with budget.
Julie, just a clarification, this is revenues by category year to date.
Correct, through May thirty-first.
Again, the vast majority of our property tax have been collected, sales tax will continue to collect through the year, and so then you'll start to see those equalize.
Correct. Okay, looking at general fund expenses, um, a few things that are kind of important to point out, um. We are behind budget on supplies and services, both of those categories, so remember that gas is in our supplies category. And so as of uh, the end of May, uh, gas is sixty-six thousand dollars higher than it was year to date last year, so. Substantial increase there, um, keep in mind, departments are doing their part uh, to cut and save and. Transfer some money from one line to the other to try to do what they can to cover a lot of that. Um, services are uh, behind, but primarily because uh, professional services and consulting fees, a lot which was bond related. Uh, so we'll be refunding uh, some of those out of the bond proceeds, so you'll see that go down as we go through that process. Um, and again, with EMS revenues being higher, EMS billing is higher, so that's based on a percentage, so. That's what's driving that, uh, paving is kicking off, so I would expect for supplies and maintenance to be uh, ticking up here over the next month or so. This is the same kind of expenses by category, the only thing I did a little bit different here was kind of to align what we talked about as we went into the twenty-three proposed budget. And just to give you a breakdown of personnel, um, obviously that is our largest expense. Um, budgeted at seventy and a half percent of twenty-two budget, about the same for twenty-three's proposed budget. But I wanted to give you the split there on what we're spending on public safety versus what we're spending on general government, just as a, just as kind of a, an extra. Layer to show you as we have conversations about next year's budget. Okay, looking at water fund, so uh, slightly ahead of year-to-date budget in water sales, a little bit different than what I've been telling you the past few months. Um, however, it's drier, um, so people are watering a little bit more, but as EA said earlier, even though we're seeing some higher irrigation. Um, it's still not comparing to the irrigation that we've had in drier years, so last year, it's gonna be up, because we had. Four and a half inches of rain in uh, this May of last year, which is June sales, so and then also April was super wet. Uh, but if you go back to years past, we are actually seeing less consumption than we did um, in a drier year. Sewer sales still uh, ahead of uh, twenty-two estimated budget and ahead of last year, but again, a pretty stable uh, revenue source there. Just a little different look at your revenues, um, to point out here, total revenues, as we talked about, that should be expenses. Uh, better than twenty-two estimated budget, largely to do to sewer sales. Um, and we do expect to meet our revenue budget at this time, but again, we continue to watch that as uh, we watch water consumption. I added this slide, just a little bit different than I gave you last month, um, just to take a look historically at rainfall, so. Um, your orange line there is fiscal year twenty-one rainfall, and your black line is fiscal year twenty-two rainfall, so just for comparison purposes. And then your um, light blue and dark blue lines there are fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two revenues, so you can see. Clear impact on uh, rainfall, remember that rainfall um, in May affects June sales, so the way we report it, so. Hey, looking at the expense side of the water fund, um, overall fund continues to be year-to-date uh, better than estimated budget. In most categories, so a large portion of our supplies and maintenance, as you know, are driven by the amount of water that we produce. Um, so with drier weather, you know, we couldn't, you know, see an increase in maintenance, whether it be water lines, sewer lines, those kind of things that. That are impacted by drier weather, um, full year uh, um, early estimates, um. Still, we trend to, just trend a little bit slightly ahead of last year, so I'm confident in saying that on the expense side, we will. Uh, make budget, but just keep in mind, we do have a lot of inflationary factors right now that we're watching uh, daily, and we are a month behind on what I'm reporting to you, so. Again, with your uh, two largest uh, categories here that we're seeing impact the expenses, and also that we've been talking about as we go through budget discussions. This is gas and chemicals in dollars compared to same period of time last year, so this is year-to-date. In both of those, so nineteen percent increase in gas in the water fund and seventeen percent increase in chemicals, and again, this is a month behind, so I will tell you. That chemicals are bumping that thirty percent um, and more increase on chemicals for both the water reclamation plant and the water production. Okay, fall fund continues to perform very well, uh, revenues eight percent ahead of fiscal year twenty-one, year-to-date. Um, we do, we are doing better than budgeted expenses, but keep in mind, supply chain issues are a big problem there, so we have several items that we're still waiting for, so. We're hopeful that some of those items will uh, arrive before the end of the year, and we'll be able to uh. Level that out and get some of the things that they're needing and that have ordered a long time ago. Eight hotel occupancy tax fund, again, as of May thirty-first, um, May revenues are for April stays. So through uh, May, uh, fifteen percent ahead of fis- fiscal year twenty twenty-one, so still performing really well. Um, expecting to see uh, fiscal year twenty-two, if I'm right, um, end about two hundred and sixty thousand better on revenues. Um, hard to project expenses right now, it's still a little bit too early, we have a lot of events uh, and things like that that are going on that will affect this fund. Development Services Fund, uh, quick overview there, uh, revenues from permits and fees are behind estimated budget to date, but ahead of last year. This is a really hard fund to predict, um, because we just don't know, we can estimate what projects are gonna be taken off, but it's completely project driven, so we just, we just don't know. And now we have so many supply chain issues that that's really impacting um, contractors and what they're doing. Um, expenses are better than estimated budget to date, so that's good. Um, and we did, if you, if you look at the revenue shortfall there, we did estimate, or we did budget. A smaller transfer to Development Services this year than we did last year, just based on our revenue expectation, so. Um, we'll see how that goes over the next few months, it's just really still too early to estimate. Um, and like I said, from this point forward, I'll bring you estimations where I can, um, if I can't, then I'll tell you, it's just too soon and I just can't, but if I can, and and it'll help moving on. Through the next few things, then I'll definitely bring those to you. So just a last look at our quick calendar, um, I keep giving you this so that you can kind of keep track of what's next and what's important, um, so we won't go through the whole thing, but. On the uh, budget workshop on July nineteenth, we'll be talking about the water fund. Um, the community investment plan that we talked about, so all of our capital projects, asset replacement, and then all of our other small funds, so we'll be covering all of those at that time. On August ninth, uh, we'll be making our presentation of the proposed fiscal year twenty-three budget. And then, uh, not listed on here, but September thirteenth will actually be the second reading uh, that we'll have there, so. And a lot of bond issues still working through here, and believe it or not, um, we're about a month away from start working on all of it, so, super excited about that. Any questions about any of these items?
Notice you're filing the budget on July thirty-first, that's a Sunday, can you file on a Sunday?
I will not file on Sunday, I will file on Friday before. I could file on Monday, so you know, if something happens and I trip or something, I don't know, I plan to file on Friday before. All things that line up with property tax, that's the big one, if we don't get it till the twenty-fifth, that gives like a three-day window. So that's, that's a pretty tight adjustment to not just make to um, balance the budget, but then also to the budget document itself, that we have to prepare that. One line changes every graph, so. Any questions?
No pressure.
No, none at all.
Thank you, Julie.
I'm sorry.
What's the latest from the appraisal district?
I got an update yesterday, I haven't plugged it into my scenario chart yet to see. Um, so I'm, I'm hoping, I do know that they have a lot of protests hearings scheduled on the fourteenth of July. Um, so I don't think that we'll be getting it as early as we did last year, but if those get resolved, I know those are the bigger ones. So if those get resolved, we may be a lot closer, a lot sooner. Hopeful, hopeful.
Okay.
And I do have Ann Berger with me tonight, um, from Hilltop, and she's gonna give you a quick update on the market and some things about the bond.
Thank you, thank you.
Martin, do you have Ann's?
Good to have you with us, Ann.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity to be back in Kerrville again before you this evening. In visiting um, with Julie, we thought it would be helpful to give a market update. As to where we are and pro- talk about the proposed timing relative to the bond issue. So to begin, uh, many of you may recall, this is the Bond Buyers Index. This is the chart that I show almost every time I come to visit with you, this is an economic indicator that comes out late on Thursdays. And while it's not the interest rate that the city would expect to get, I think it is very helpful in demonstrating what the trends are in our municipal markets. So this particular chart is the one-year history, it goes back one year ago, and clearly. You can see that interest rates, municipal rates have increased significantly. Um, this, none of us had any expectation that this was going to happen, um, and you can just see about last year, we were. Two and a quarter, and now we're at about a three fifty-four, and it is very interesting, if you look on the right-hand side. Uh, there's been a lot of volatility and dynamic aspects to the market, it went up, it came back down, went back up again. And a lot of it is just based on economic news that is coming out, a lot of focus on what's going on with the Fed and the Fed funds rate. And potential economic things over the next year or two. However, having said that, I wanted to go also show you the twenty-five year schedule. And this goes back to nineteen ninety-six, and you can see that from a historical perspective. The interest rates are really much more in line with what they've been on a historical basis. One of the statistics that we ran, we went back to the Bond Buyer Index, this particular chart. Which they started preparing this in nineteen eighty, and we compared the interest rate that we have today, the most current rate. And looked at it as a percent of time of all the interest rates going back to nineteen eighty, so to put even the three point five four in perspective. Still, eighty-eight point seven two percent of the time, going back to nineteen eighty, interest rates have been higher than they are now. And I just think it's really important for us, when we step back and look at this from a historical perspective, yes, rates are not as low as they were a year ago. But from a historical perspective, rates still are, I think it's important when we go back and we look at the last two and three years. That really was much more the anomaly than where we are from an interest rate perspective today. This is the um, municipal market data, or we call it MMD yield curve, and it shows the various curves relative to triple A. Double A, which is red, which monitor, which parallels the city's double A rating, the green is B double A, and then the black line. Is, I'm sorry, the green is A and the black line is a B double A rating, so you can see the. Interest rates are very flat on the back end of the yield curve, where we've seen most of the impact in interest rates really has been on the front end. Uh, relative to what the Fed has done. So, talking about the proposed schedule for uh, discussion this evening, we're um, wanting to highlight that we have already had several drafts. Of the preliminary official statement, I think that there's a key focus on the fact that the taxable assessed valuations should be certified no later. Than July twenty-fifth pursuant to state law, we will be sending the documents on July eleventh, I believe. To Standard and Poor's for their review, generally, as Julie mentioned, they formulate a list of questions, we work to prepare on those. And we schedule a call to go through them, um, we are planning at this point in time to price on Tuesday, August twenty-third. That is the point in time when the interest rates will potentially be locked in, we would be coming back to you that evening. With a bid, a proposed bid from the underwriters subject to council approval, and should you accept those interest rates, then we would be targeting closing. On September fifteenth. And just a couple of summary highlights, um, as you may recall, we're talking about uh, forty-five million. In bond proceeds, and my apologies, we have a typo in here, the deposit to the project fund should be forty-four million four twenty-five. And um, we are projecting, to be conservative, a four and a quarter percent interest rate. With a two fifteen thirty-two call date, the final maturity still isn't aligned with what we had talked to council about before. With a twenty fifty-two final maturity, and the projected debt service tax rate is still what was presented to the voters. Of an aggregate INS tax rate not to exceed fourteen point eleven cents, and with, with that, yes ma'am.
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, it's a perfect timing.
Um, so, having not been part of a bond sale before, that's, am I using the right terminology, bond sale? We talked about not, we're buying them in tranches, is that correct? Or do we buy the whole package together?
There's the whole package.
So we're, we're issuing the whole amount at the same time.
That's correct.
Yes, ma'am, it, there are different ways that it can be done, but we are recommending that it be done on an all or none basis, all in one tranche. And part of that is just given the uncertainty with interest rates going forward, we feel like the most appropriate approach in this particular market. Is to go ahead and lock in those interest rates today, and you will be able to um, pursuant to the arbitrage rebate regulations. You can earn interest up to what the arbitrage yield is on your bonds. And so if you earn more than that, then you do have to rebate it back to the federal government, I've always said, that's, well, first of all, nobody's had that problem. A really long time, but I've also said in the past that if you do end up having to rebate, I don't think that's a negative, because it meant that you earned. Everything that you could earn, and any interest earnings up to the arbitrage yield may be able to be used for project purposes. Um, we work with the city from an arbitrage rebate consultant perspective, and so you, uh, in that regard, we will help to monitor. The interest earnings to make sure that our, if there are any amounts that are earned over it, that those are recognized and set aside.
Okay, so, um, when we complete the project, it would be fantastic if we came in under budget. So, if we do have funds, um, that we have not spent. Um, at the end of this project, then what are the options or what happens to those funds, is, is that what you were speaking to?
So, if you, if you have unexpended bond proceeds, there are only two options for how you can utilize. Utilize those dollars, and those are pursuant to state law, so you do not have a lot of discretion, so one, you can use. So one, you can use them for maybe any other projects, any other projects associated with what the specific ballot language was that the community approved. So if maybe the, you know, maybe you could do furniture, fixtures, or you could use it for, for other items like that. Or if you have extra bond proceeds, those monies can go into the debt service fund to help pay your debt service. Or you can put those monies in an irrevocable, um, escrow and use them to pay off the bonds on the first call date.
Oh, okay.
So you do have a couple of options relative to that.
Remind me what a call date is?
So in Texas, we have what we call a standard ten-year par call date. And that allows the city a hundred percent discretion to make the decision in ten years. If you want to pay off these bonds in whole, you can do so and there is no cost whatsoever. And so that is really the full discretion of the city. Really, um, in the past where that has been mostly utilized is because especially over the last several years, when interest rates were so low, we were able to undertake refinancing transactions, which then put those bonds at a lower interest rate and resulted in debt service savings for the city. So you, that's really most of the time where the call date is exercised. Um, sometimes if there's some sort of a windfall, or if you have unutilized bond proceeds and you've put them in an escrow, then you can use that to the call date to pay off bonds at that point in time.
It's in your window, but it's in February. It's ten years from last February, but how that date, how do you do that date?
Like I said, generally it's about ten years, um, but I will tell you, um, I try to push that. I try to push it to eight and a half or nine years. And certain markets, we can get away with it without there being cost. We don't want to do something that's gonna cost the city more, but a lot of times it'll just depend on the market at that time. And on a couple of the bond issues that we did for the city before, we were able to either get eight or eight and a half year call dates without there being a cost. The investors are a little bit more particular right now in this current market, so we may have to go to a full nine and a half or ten. But we will, we will analyze that at the time of pricing and try to get that to be, um, as soon as we can, but without costing.
Any other questions, comments? It's exciting, it's, uh, overwhelming, but, uh, it's exciting.
Well, thank you. We greatly appreciate the opportunity to work with the city on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A little bit of history. Back in Yolden days when I was on council, she was, she represented us for bonds that we sold, so thank you.
That's a good sign.
We were both just out of high school.
Okay, all right. At this time, uh, we are scheduled and because we did not go into executive session earlier, uh, we do need to do that at this time. So do I have a motion?
I move that we, uh, move into executive session.
Four, you wanna give the numbers there, Joe? Five five one point oh seven one, five five one point oh seven two.
And five five one point oh eight seven.
Got it. All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, and, uh, we will see you when we are finished. We will go upstairs and, uh, thank you all for coming, if you do not hang around. At eight twenty-five, we are out of executive session. We have, uh, no reports to be made. And are there any items for future agenda that anyone would like to recommend?
I know we wanna get out of here quicks, but I just have one, um, if we could consider having, uh, council, what y'all think on having like some reports or CRP reports um, that we talked about at a previous meeting, either like quarterly or monthly, just so the community is also aware on like some developments that are going on and, um, just other general things that we had talked about at one point. I don't know what y'all think about that. Kind of bringing that back in as one of the agenda items, just for information.
Just like the worksheet that we, that just kind of gives you the progress of the projects.
Right, right, and either the city manager or whoever he wants to designate for or whatever, can just like briefly say, you know, this project is still pending, you know, we've got this.
What happened with the bricks?
Right, there you go, some, just simple stuff like that, just to go through real quick bullet points that are, we know are.
Do you keep a, do you keep a spreadsheet like that?
Uh, I'm, I'm maybe confused, are we talking about private development projects or are we talking about public projects?
Have to be public.
Public projects, as you know, we, we come to you guys on a quarterly basis. In fact, we've got it scheduled, uh, I think for your next workshop on the twelfth. Uh, for the, uh, community improvement program, but, um, I would be a little bit reticent on the private projects just because we don't, we don't control the timelines on those at all.
Right, no, the public is what I'm talking about, yeah?
We, we post that update every month on the city's website, but we also try to come to you guys on a quarterly basis.
Right, okay, well then I'll have to draw.
One of the meeting where we remind that we would like a town hall concerning.
Well, we have to put it on a future agenda.
Put it on a future agenda.
Yeah, you guys took, uh.
Yeah, cause then we decided to do it in that meeting instead, yes, since, yeah.
That's good though, just confirm.
Okay, anyone else? All right, at eight twenty-seven, we are adjourned. Thank you all.